Okay, can I call the meeting to order, please? So, welcome to Monday, November 27th, Meeting of St. John's Common Council. I can't believe the month is flying by. City Clerk, well, no, I'm gonna start. I'll start with the land acknowledgement first, and we have Counselor Ogden reading the land acknowledgement this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. This is to acknowledge the land on which the city of St. John, Mennequest, is situated. It's a traditional territory of the Wallistic Way. The Wallistic Way, along with their indigenous neighbors, the Mi'kmaq, and the Peste Maqwadi, signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the 1700s that protected their rights to lands and resources. Can we take a moment to reflect?
Okay, can I ask everyone to please stand for the National Anthem? Okay, this evening Counselor Norton is not here this evening. He's unwell, and if you're tuning in, we have, I think, five presentations tonight. We have an interesting, a great kit tonight. Counselor, City Clerk, over to you for the first item.
Thank you, Your Worship. First on the agenda is item 2.1, Approval of Minutes of November the 14th.
Minutes of November 14th, Counselor Redwine and Counselor Hickey on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is the approval of the agenda, and there are two additions. One is a report that was circulated earlier today to council. It would become item 16.1, and it's for snow removal, St. John parking. And the second addition is from Committee of the Whole. It would be item 17.1. It's an update on property acquisitions for retail drive free alignment.
Okay, I'll take a mover and a seconder on the approval of the agenda. Counselor Hickey, the deputy on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Next is disclosures of conflict of interest, if we have any.
Counselor Redwine, over to you.
I'm gonna declare conflict on 17.1, retail drive.
All right, thank you. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is item 5, the consent agenda.
Deputy, over to you for the consent agenda, please.
I would move 5.1 through to 5.9, please.
Take a seconder, Counselor Sullivan on the question. Counselor Redwine.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make mention that there's some money getting approved here in our consent agenda for $855,000,000 for the taxpayers, and I wanted to give a thank you to Director Yamin and his staff for working on these projects. They work very hard here, and to the province of New Brunswick for their support as well.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, so we've, I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is item 6, Members' Comments.
Members' comments. Counselor Ogden, over to you.
Yeah, I just, something very positive for this weekend I thought I should share and send some accolades to the One Stop Shop. I was talking to a developer about three projects he's gonna be starting anytime, maybe perhaps even in the winter, and I said, "What's your experience been?" And he's a longtime developer, and he said, "Well, in the past, it was difficult, and the city corrected that." And sometimes, he said, "The city gets a bad rap for it because it's something in the past, so I wanted to help correct it today." But he said it was very smooth sailing, and he's talking about three major projects. It's going to take up three pieces of land that everybody will be really, really pleased are getting developed, and they're gonna be developed very soon, 1, 2, 3, in that area. But he said it was really, really smooth sailing through the One Stop Shop, and he said sometimes the city gets a bad rap from an old rap. And when he told me that, I thought we should try to rectify that by telling people that the city of St. John is a good place to invest in and a good place to develop, and that our staff is more than willing, maybe they've become more entrepreneurial, more flexible, more solution-driven. Whatever it is, he said it was a really, really good experience, and I want our staff to know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Appreciate you bringing that here this evening. Small city, big heart. Prove it again. Over to the deputy next.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just wanna say, first of all, that, you know, all of our visitors to St. John Conventions and so forth are all really important to the city. It's great, you know, PR for the city and everything. But this is unique. Last week, I had the pleasure of welcoming over 250 delegates to the Professional Convention Management Association's Canadian Innovation Conference, which was hosted here in the city of St. John. This was a tremendous opportunity to showcase our destination and venues to meeting planners who can recommend to their clients to hold their events in St. John and Brunswick. From the opening reception hosted in our beautiful city of St. John market, to the exceptional keynotes and breakouts at the St. John Trade and Convention Center, to the closing night party at the Marco Polo Cruise Terminal, and the Area 506 Waterfront Container Village, it was a resounding success. So I just wanna give a big shout-out to Shawna Decker and the team at Envision, who won this business for the city and then demonstrated why we are best-in-class in hosting events. So I just wanted to pass that along. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy. Always great to get that sort of feedback. Thank you. Counselor Hickey, over to you.
Thanks very much, Your Worship. A few updates to offer. I was able to attend the St. Andrews Society's dinner this weekend, celebrating St. Andrews, St. Andrews Day, as well as 225 years of service to the city of St. John. Pretty impressive. I don't know if anyone here's ever walked down Waterloo Street in a kilt, but it's a great way to get your legs complimented. And earlier in the week, I was able to attend the St. John Arts Board Christmas Party. Very exciting to see all the accomplishments and then also see all the grants being handed out to the organizations, getting it done for the arts in this community. I was also able to attend alongside a couple other members of council, both, two of which are on each side of me here, Dewali, and which was held at Samuel Champlain last weekend. Next year, we'll all get the chance to do it, and I couldn't encourage everyone to do it more. It was a lot of fun, incredible talent showcase, but also incredible food as well, all catered by Tondies. Really special, lot of, lot of good times. Upcoming, Uptown Sparkles is on Friday. Big night for us as well. It starts, kicks off with the mayor's tree lighting as well, so we'll see everyone there. I'd also just like to give a shout-out to a couple of recent developments in St. John with the purchase and sale of both St. Patrick's School and St. Vincent's, two projects that are really gonna reshape a couple of neighborhoods that need it.
Thank you, Counselor. I heard you were in your wheat kilt, and I said, "No, that's gotta be a rumor." Excellent. Counselor Redwine, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. So since the last council meeting, we've had some more residents have lost family members in Gaza, in the genocide there and in the West Bank. I'm not sure if we've had residents that have lost family members in Israel, in Lebanon, in Yemen, or Egypt, but my deepest condolences to everybody. I wanted to make mention that I did reach out to the Compassionate Grief Center and to let them know that there has been some families here that have lost more than 42 family members, and if anybody needs any counseling, they can give them a call at 696-0202, and they're happy to try to help you with your loss.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, City Clerk, next item.
Thank you, Your Worship. Next, we have presentations scheduled. So the first is item 8.1 on the agenda, and this is a presentation from Envision St. John.
Welcome, Mr. Beckett. We'll get you to give us your name through the mic so it can be recorded for posterity.
Good evening, Your Worship Counselors. Andrew Beckett, interim CEO for Envision St. John.
Thank you.
I only had slight shivers when I walked in council chambers tonight.
You should.
I appreciate the opportunity to come tonight to provide a brief update on the activities of Envision and to touch on a number of areas that we're involved in. Just to give a status on that, I'll be very brief with any one of these areas. I could speak in great length in terms of the work that we're doing, but I thought tonight would just be a good opportunity to provide a bit of an overview, and then I'm happy to entertain questions that may be there. So over the past few months, partly as a result of changes in terms of leadership and key roles, it's been a good opportunity for us to revisit the work that we're doing and try and make sure that we're, the organizations aligned with the mandate we've been provided by the municipal councils when we were first formed. This is an opportunity to take a look and see what's working well, what needs improvement, and maybe what's missing in terms of what we're doing. So to start off with, I'm gonna mess this up completely. There we go. I'll use the arrows. It's easier than that. So to start off with, we went back to the founding documents for the organization to take a look at what had we been told, what mandate had we been provided. So to quickly run through that, we've got marketing and sales, certainly a very prominent area for the organization in terms of selling the region as a destination. We've got people attraction, looking at growing the population of the region. Growth sector development, so looking at targeted areas within the community that we're trying to develop and grow, and the few that are mentioned there, for example, the port, health, the ICT sector, and others that we're looking to try and play a part in terms of helping grow. Tourism development, maintaining our current tourism infrastructure, but also looking at things that may be missing within that that we want to grow. The entrepreneurial ecosystem. This is, I would say, a very entrepreneurial community, that we've got a lot of small and medium-sized entrepreneurs in the community that we want to help develop, provide startup support for them, and different ways that we can support those entrepreneurs in our community. A lot of work needed on an ongoing basis around data to support decision-making, so really understanding what's taking place with the local economy and being able to make that available to potential investors, but also to our own residents in different ways, and also data to help us in terms of the operations of the agency and decision support within the agency as well. So there's both an internal and an external component. Economic infrastructure development, so supporting economic infrastructure, fostering relationships with real estate investors. I'm sure that nobody around the table is really interested in real estate development, but, you know, it's, I've been, I've been very surprised and pleasantly surprised at how much of an item that is and how hot a topic that is in terms of the local area. So a lot of work around real estate development, and then also recognizing that we are here to support the municipal economic development activities as well. Each of the member municipalities have their own priorities around economic development, and we want to play a role in terms of supporting those and advancing those moving forward. So in terms of them, what that looks like on the ground in terms of the work that we do. So in terms of, again, the destination marketing side of things, a very visible area that we do a lot of promotion and marketing around the destination, working with the different various stakeholders within the tourism sector to promote. But I would say that what sometimes gets missed with this is that when we're involved in destination marketing, that's more than just attracting visitors. We've got one of the most comprehensive events calendars available anywhere in the city. Would encourage local residents to go on the destination marketing site and subscribe to the newsletters. Take a look at the events calendar. It's certainly a go-to place from my standpoint to find out what's going on around the region on an ongoing basis, because there is a wide variety of activities going on on a regular basis, and so it's a great source of information around that. There's also tools on there to help you tailor the type of experience you want to have in the region, that you can put in your interests, and it will create your own itinerary for you in terms of things that you might want to see while you're here. And again, I would say that's as valuable for new residents or current residents of the city as it is for visitors. A really great way to get a sense of what's available in the region. Keep pressing the wrong button. I'll get there. In terms of the entrepreneurial support, we provide a variety of different supports in terms of business plan development, access to capital. We operate the Impact Loan Program that provides support for local entrepreneurs. A lot of one-on-one support. On an annual basis, we probably, we're averaging about 150 one-on-one meetings with local entrepreneurs to provide them support in terms of development of business cases, looking at their cash flow, how they support their businesses going forward. On the impact loan side, we're averaging 15 to 20 impact loans that are approved on an annual basis for local entrepreneurs to help them get started. The other thing that I think is, that I've heard directly from some local entrepreneurs that they really appreciate is we've got a lot of knowledge in terms of helping people navigate the various different supports and other different things that are available for them in terms of helping them as they're going through the startup of a business. So again, a lot of those navigation supports that are available through us. Under the regional talent development side of things, so we operate, we have funding from the provincial government over a 10-year period that looks at both from the provincial government over a 10-year period that looks at both the regional talent side of things and also the population growth side. So this is an area where I think we have to recognize as a region, we're in an environment, there is a fierce competition for talent. We have a lot of jobs available in this area. We've got a great quality of life in this area that we can promote, a lot of things going in our favor that we have to put forward. But it is a very fierce competition for the talent that we need, because it's not just about growing the population, it's getting the population to grow with the talent that we need to fill the jobs that we've got available. So we're doing a lot of work around that side of things. We've run a number of targeted campaigns in the Ontario market to try and promote people moving here. We've run retention campaigns with our youth to try and keep youth in the area, to make sure that they're aware of the opportunities that are here. And we're also getting a lot more involved in a number of areas with employers to provide them supports. I would say that one of the interesting things, and I think this speaks to a strength of the combined agency work that was supported by the municipalities a few years ago, lifestyle is becoming a critical component to attracting people to this area. So having the destination marketing information and tools available to us when we're looking at workforce development is absolutely critical so that we can respond to and showcase some of the great lifestyle opportunities that are available in this region. And it plays a big part to help us in terms of moving forward in that area. Under the population growth side of things, the, I would say, the key message that I'd like to deliver here when it comes to population growth, there's two areas where that's going to come from. It's not going to come from waiting, sitting back and expecting that our current population is going to grow. Deaths are outpacing births, sorry to say, but that's a reality of our demographics. The population growth is going to come from migration, as we've seen certainly during the pandemic. We benefited from people from other parts of the country moving to this region. But immigration is probably going to be, without question, the most important area that we need to focus on. So we're getting involved in a lot of different work around promoting and supporting, working with the vast network of supports that are available in the local area to try and ensure that we're providing and showcasing a welcoming community. And we're looking at various tools to measure that. It's not good enough to be friendly. We're friendly. We have to truly be a welcoming community. And there's a big difference between those two things. And so we're looking at some measures for that, and that we'll be trying to work with the system on an ongoing basis to really showcase ourselves as a truly welcoming community that does attract a significant number of immigrants and then hopefully retains them over a long period of time to grow our population. The residential, commercial, industrial, and residential development side of things, this is an area that we've done some ramping up over the last little while to sort of do some work around this. Again, my central message here, housing is the number-one bottleneck to our growth, without question. We've got people that want to move here, but we don't have adequate housing for all the people that want to move here. So we're doing a lot of work with local developers to look at different ways that we can promote and get some development going in various ways. We ran a workshop, as one example, workshop a few weeks ago, where we invited developers in to talk about the opportunities to use modular housing as one possible solution. For some, it's not the only, but one possible solution for the housing side. Had a great turnout at that, and it really sort of showed us the importance of engaging that developer community and really nurturing it and growing it going forward. So we're looking at a variety of other ways that we can work with the development community. And we are handholding a number of key developments right now within the region that we're cautiously optimistic over the next little while that we've got some developments that are close to moving across the line. But it is a very, very tough development climate right now. Interest rates are high, costs have gone through the roof over the last couple of years. So really promoting those developments is tough right now, but we're doing the best we can too, because we know how important those projects are for us from a number of different standpoints. Finally, I just wanted to touch on a few internal initiatives that I think are going to be important for us moving forward in terms of framing up where we're going. So we're working on three key regional strategies that will help shape the direction. And through these strategies, we're looking to find those sort of key levers that are going to help in terms of achieving our population growth targets, our tax-based growth targets over the longer term. So a regional economic development strategy, regional tourism master plan and action plan associated with it, and then finally, a regional immigration strategy. Through those, I guess the comment I'd make, we're not looking for a one-size-fits-all solution for every municipality in the region. We're looking for common themes for the region that we'll build, but we recognize the importance of showcasing through these strategies that we have a lot of unique identities amongst the municipal units. It's one of the big selling features for our region, that you do have a variety of different options available depending on your interests. So we want to make sure that that's captured. Within the organization, we tried to do some work in terms of better alignment of the organization so people could see clearly who's responsible for what and how that ties to the services that we're delivering. And I would say that we're trying to move the organization from being reactive. So if you could find us, I think we delivered good services, but you had to find us. So we want to be more proactive, and we want to have people out and about in the community more, be more visible in and out of a lot of different places so that people understand what supports we've got for them, and so that we can understand what challenges are being faced in the local area and be able to deliver supports for that. And then on the transparency and accountability side of things, we're building a new set of key performance indicators from the ground up, looking at the work that we're doing, building that up in terms of measuring that against what we're trying to achieve from a regional standpoint. And starting in 2024, we'll be rolling those out so that hopefully it provides a clearer line and visibility to the work we're doing. And we're also going to align our budget so that you can see our budgeted expenditures on a service-based side of things, so that you can see how we're allocating the money to the various services that we've got responsibility for. The final piece is just our current organization chart. I put this up here just, and it's part of your presentation. So again, as counselors, you can see the people that you can contact on any of the different various services we've got. But I would also highlight that we have a few key vacant positions at the present time. And this is, again, as we've had some positions, people leave our organization, it's a chance to realign some of our allocation of resources. We're hiring three growth coordinators, and those are the positions that will be out and about and more visible in the community to help us make contact and regular interaction with particularly the small and medium-sized enterprises in the community that will drive some of that growth that we need moving forward. So without Your Worship, counselors, I'm happy to try and address any questions that you might have.
Appreciate you coming in tonight, Mr. Beckett. We certainly are aware that immigration is our driver for growth, and also the quality of life is really what people are looking for today. So we've all heard that ourselves as counselors, you know, from people who have either moved here or looking to move here. So we know those are, so times have changed, so it's interesting times as well. So I do have a few questions for you. Counselor Ogden is up first.
Thank you, Andrew. Andrew, one thing, when I'm looking at that, I'm looking at some small-picture things, and I think one thing that you guys are missing is that the economic structure of St. John has changed dramatically in 25 years. Previous councils didn't speak out when we lost the 5,000 federal jobs, seven departments plus to dry it up. And that has not been made up. And so I really strongly suggest you go and look at St. John's new. If we're going to grow, we need a better educated population and a younger population. We're losing the 18 to 30 crowd. When kids get out of high school in St. John, there's not as many options here as there's in Moncton and Fredrickton, and thus, they have a younger population. But even, we were talking earlier about housing, our wages are lower and our benefits are lower, yet we pay the most in taxes and we have the highest poverty rate. So that doesn't make sense at all. So there's a large amount of provincial tax dollars that are generated here, but they're not staying here. And, but we have a greater need. So those are things I think you people should be having a question about. You are our economic arm. I don't see it in any of your things. I see a lot of small things. But those two structural things, the taxes, the federal jobs, and I said, the third thing, our universities, those have to be dealt with. They're like an elephant in the room in St. John. Nobody wants to talk to it, and nobody's dealt with it in the past. I agree with you. I helped introduce entrepreneurship in the high school system, that we do need more entrepreneurs. And you can teach kids to be problem solvers and get them involved, and kids love entrepreneurship. And we will have more entrepreneurs. But where I see lacking is the economic structure that St. John got hurt by, failed on, that has not, and it shows in our lack of growth compared to Moncton, Fredrickton, Halifax, and even Sydney, Nova Scotia tripled the number of university students and has a greater federal presence now. And we have, I don't see it dealt with there at all.
I appreciate your comments, Counselor. And one of the areas that I didn't spend a significant amount of time on this evening, moving forward, happy to, is, I mentioned at the outset that one of the areas that we've got responsibility for is growth sector development. That's a whole, that's more of an umbrella focus for us that goes across all of our service areas, but it does get into things like post-secondary education and what we're doing to support and grow the post-secondary side of things. It gets into the various sectors and how we're looking at growing them, and the government, the contact with governments in terms of increasing our presence on that. So we do have a number of different initiatives that are more that sort of growth sector development focus, but your point's well made.
Thank you. Counselor, can I come back to you? You're over your three minutes, so can I come back to you? I'll just circle around. Counselor Sullivan, over to you.
Thanks, Your Worship. Mr. Beckett, welcome back to St. John.
Thank you.
We are lucky to have you in this position, so thank you for coming back home. I'm going to get very specific on something you worked here for, but a year ago, when we had our presentation, it was around budget time, and I pointed out that our residential assessment increases were really strong. Our non-residential and our industrial customers were not as strong and not as strong compared to other cities. And I kind of laid it out that a year later, that's what I was going to be looking at. So here we are a year later, and our non-residential increases are 3%, and our heavy industry is at 0.44%. Can you speak? And maybe you're not there yet. I'm happy that there are empty positions that are soon to be filled, perhaps on that side. A lot of successful things going on in Envision. I don't think industry attraction is one. Maybe could you speak to some plans to, and I know it's not all on you, but to help push those numbers?
Yeah, no, thanks, Counselor. It's, when it comes to the industrial attraction side of things, we're a key partner in terms of that whole process. So we work extensively with Opportunities New Brunswick and Invest in Canada. I would say that we've had some very positive outreaches from both those organizations in terms of potential businesses that are looking at this region for potential development. We've got a good package of materials. We're a strong local partner in terms of showcasing the opportunities that are here from a number of different standpoints. It's an active file for us in terms of industrial attraction, but again, largely through those other agencies that do have more of the outreach side of things. I agree with you in terms of the measures. At the end of the day, that we're looking for ways to try and move those forward, working with both those groups. We had Invest in Canada in about a week and a half ago to really sort of give them an on-the-ground look at some different opportunities. We're optimistic, but we're not where we need to be yet in terms of those. I would do a quick shout out, though, to St. John Energy. They are also a fabulous local partner, and their entrepreneurship is absolutely going to be critical for a number of different files that we're looking forward. So it's, again, marshaling together all those key assets, working with Opportunities New Brunswick and Invest in Canada to try and move that file forward.
Appreciate it. Maybe a bit of a follow-up, just because, you know, as a teacher, my guidance counselors keep telling me, Mr. Sullivan, control what you can control. And Opportunities New Brunswick is great, but I don't know if they really care where in New Brunswick something lands, if it's in New Brunswick, right? Their mandate is the province of New Brunswick. So how do we go, great, thank you for your help working through, now let's land them here as opposed to anywhere in New Brunswick?
And we do that on an ongoing basis. They know full well what our priorities are. We're trying to showcase the areas where we've got strength compared to some of the other areas in the province. You're right, from an Opportunities New Brunswick standpoint, they're looking at attracting to the region, but we've got some key strong assets in this area that businesses are looking for that we think puts us in good stead for some of the attraction that we're trying to move forward on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hickey, over to you.
Thanks very much, Worship. Thanks to Mr. Beckett as well for being here. It's nice to see the real estate spring in your step. I think for a while, we've seen challenge in seeing projects presented here at council and promised here at council and then stuck in that pipeline. And I hope that that renewed focus continues to prioritize getting things, pulling things through that pipeline and making sure that we're overcoming hurdles alongside developers and supporting them as much as possible to get more units built. I would suggest, and I think it's not really controversial, that the biggest hurdle to our growth in this community is real estate development. And on the flip side, one of our other biggest ones is around our advocacy here at this table around tax reform. And I think a thing we've been looking for from Envision for a while has been alignment on those advocacy issues to support municipal economic development. And I hope that that continues to be a priority and is a priority within your mandate. And because I think as a region, it's important that we're all advocating for the same things and we're all pushing for the same results, to get better results. Because similar to what Counselor Sullivan, the Chair of our Finance Committee offered, those are significant hurdles that we need to get over around, whether it be assessment growth or overall tax reform. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Counselor.
We are certainly aware of those and doing our part as best we can to advocate those positions forward as well.
Counselor Redwan, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you to Mr. Beckett, thank you for coming in today. I just wanted to mention that, first of all, I think I've probably been one of the people around this table the most hard on Envision, and I've been pleasantly surprised by the strategic changes that you've made since you've gotten in. So thank you very much. One of those changes being two more people working on that development piece with Jeff Seer, because I mean, housing, we're in such a housing crisis, we definitely needed more, to see more people. He's great, but I mean, you know, it's a lot for one person to take on. I was really happy to see the change with the, wanting to change the KPIs and service-based budgets. So just a couple of questions. I'm wondering if you have any idea roughly when you're hoping to have the new KPIs done? And then I'm also wondering if Envision is doing anything to try to break down the barriers for new residents and trying to get their credentials recognized, because we do have a lot of talent here, but they're just not able to work in their areas.
Fair. In terms of the key performance indicators, we plan on rolling those out starting early in 2024.
Great.
So for the year, you will start to see those. In terms of the credential side of things, look, we have active and ongoing discussions with the province on a number of different files to try and move the workforce forward. So that's one of the areas that we've put forward some comments on. And part of our workforce development efforts, we'll continue to try and advocate for more movement on that side of things.
Yeah, it's great. I mean, it's just so complicated. You know, some things are overseen by the province, some by the feds, some by associations. So it's a very complex thing, but it's definitely keeping us from having people working in different fields. So thank you for your work on that, Mr. Beckett. And I think you're doing a fabulous job from what I see so far. So it's great.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ogden, back to you.
This council is growth, and I like us to be concentrated on that and focused and work together on that growth and not on other things. But I would like to see where we're at with federal jobs. We have lost, I think I counted, seven departments. And then this weekend, a person told me that a few months ago, he was laid off with 60 other CRA workers in St. John. And so we seem to be really falling behind. And I do want us to compare to Moncton. I realize Moncton has a special relationship with Ottawa. That's not always going to be there. So what's our plan? You know, like, St. John's new plan, Mary MC, Charlottetown, had a plan. I have not seen a plan for the city. And if we continue to lose and we don't say anything because we don't want to talk about it, we're not going to get better. I also want to see us posted our university numbers, because I believe they shrunk. And we make a big deal out of, we're going to get another 300 university students. But if we lost 500, where does that put us? Because Moncton's around 9,000, and Fredrickton's around 11,000. Because Moncton's around 9,000, and Fredrickton's around 11,000. I think even Sydney, 7,000, and Halifax is 32,000, and we're at 2,000. So I want to see those numbers out there so that we know what we're dealing with and what we can do. Maybe, you know, they all have many, many institutions in those cities, and they all have presidents who are pushing for that. So I think with St. John generating the most tax dollars over the last 60 years and 70% of a university's funding is tax dollars, our money's not staying here. And I want to know what Envision is doing about that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Okay. Mr. Beckett, great to have you in. Great work, and we'll see you back, I guess, in the, probably somewhat not near.
In the spring, in the springtime.
In the springtime.
And we'll be also doing an annual general meeting sometime in the spring as well to, to provide a bit more detailed information in terms of some of the things that we're involved in that you'll, you'll be seeing an invitation for as we get things moved along on that side of things.
Perfect, we'll all be there. All right, thank you. Okay, I need a motion to receive for information. Councillor Sullivan and councillor Stewart on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Thank you, your worship. We have another presentation scheduled as item 8.2 on the agenda. And this one is a presentation from LIFPA, Don Bosco St. John, also known as Lise School.
Thank you. Marie, welcome.
Thank you.
I'll get you to say your name into the microphone for us so we can record.
Yeah, is that okay?
Perfect.
And I'm just going to try it. Okay, I'm good.
I'll get you, you're going to give us your name.
Yeah, I'm Marie, and I'm Marie Longlois, and I'm speaking on behalf of the LIFPA, Don Bosco St. John tonight.
Perfect.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you councillors. I'm Marie, and I, I moved here four months ago from France. It's, I'm used to speaking in front of, in front of students, as I'm a teacher normally. And it's a bit, I'm a bit anxious talking to you, so hopefully I'm not going to make too many English mistakes and not bore you with too many details. I know that lots of you know the project already, and I thought it was relevant standing before you to also present the project in general to, in a proper way to the city of St. John. So I'm also pleased to show you the rendering, one of the first renderings of the school, which is going to be in Market Square, opening next year in September 2024, in the former New Brunswick Museum. I'm going to present the team to you. First, we have Sylvain Olivier, who is our CEO and Head of School. He's currently the headmaster of a rather large school in this, where I come from, and where I taught for eight years. He's been a director in France for over 20 years. And he's making a great job, and we are very lucky to have him. I'm Marie, and I don't, I'm not wearing my glasses tonight, but I'm, I'm working here as a development manager. My two main missions are enrolling local students and looking for host families for our exchange students, which I'm going to mention later. Elen is, she's got equivalent missions in France and Europe. Manon is our Communication Director. She has a very important role in the school. She's the educational training expert. So she's here to help us navigate through the student's special needs. And Anila is our first officially recruited teacher. She's going to be a physical education and economic and social sciences teacher, and she's also going to be in charge of managing a musical project with the students, as we know that extracurricular activities are very important as well. So about the LIFPA, we are a French international school. We are currently being assisted by the IOFO, which is the Agency for French Education Abroad. There are close to 600 schools, part of that network in the world. There are eight other schools in Canada, but not west of Quebec, so we'll be the, the first one in Atlantic Canada, and are very proud of that. Teaching will mostly be done in French, and we are going to offer the French, the official French curriculum, which might be the difference with what exists here in St. John today. And the location, as you can see, was, is currently being redesigned and renovated for the student's safety and learning progress. We're working with the local architect team. And the school is enrolling students from age two to 18, and there will be a daycare program from the age of two to six. Well, just, just so you know, in France, school starts at the age of two. And it's really important for me to emphasize the fact that we really want to be part of the community, and we want to exist and work with everyone and the existing schools as well, and all the partners, possible partners in the city. And we want to be able to give back to the community as well. About the strength of the LIFPA and the team, we are, well, French international schools are a path of excellence. By linguism, especially in provinces such as New Brunswick, is very important for students who are future job seekers, of course. And I think that that aligns perfectly with Mr. Beckett's presentation. We, because we are great at focusing on each student's talents and needs, we believe we are able to nurture those talents and make them the best versions of themselves, basically. And we want to keep our classes very small so that we can concentrate on, on everyone. So there would be a maximum of 20, 22 students per class. As I said before, there will be actual learning starting at the age of two. Don't imagine your kids being, sitting at a desk whole day. There will be activities, hands-on activities, which are very important, of course. And there will be an individual guiding through methodology and orientation. And we know that for students who might choose to enroll at our school and come from either the Anglophone School District or Francophone School District or an international student, we are great at making equivalences in the credentials of students and, yeah, to make sure that they adapt to our system very smoothly. I'm going to, well, yeah, go by on diplomas and certifications. The most important thing is to know that we are offering the French certifications and diplomas, including the French Baccalaureate, which was actually the basis for the IB, the International Baccalaureate, which will also be offered at the school starting in 2025. What is very specific about our school is that, as I said before, we are great at focusing on our students individually. We believe that each student, as each human being, is unique. And we believe that to include everyone, we actually need to make sure that differences and different needs are taken care of. And this is, the whole team is devoted to taking care of those students' needs. And we are great at adapting and adjusting to make sure that everyone can follow their own path. And of course, the second strength and what makes us specific also is that, well, we are an international school, right? So we are, there is, there is going to be a very diverse background in the school and opportunities for students, both before they graduate and after, of course, to spend time abroad. So of course, for our Canadian students, opportunity to spend time mostly in Europe, because we benefit from a great network of schools there, and also to have a chance to be hosted by host families. And it will be the same for our French students. Well, enrollment has started, and it's very fast, actually in France especially, because, well, it's a great opportunity for French students. And they dream of going to Canada, and hopefully they will stay to study here at university and maybe choose to immigrate definitively. And for those students, there will be close to 100 every year, coming for three, six, or 11 months, they can decide. And they will be between the age of 12, well, mostly 13 to 18. And we are looking for host families for those students. We believe that hosting a student is a great experience. It's a huge commitment, of course, but it's also a very rewarding and fulfilling experience for both parties. And we've got more information on this, and I would be thrilled to, well, answer all the questions that people could have about hosting a student. And these are solid grounds for the future of students, being culturally and linguistically open and skilled and benefiting from, well, having your needs taken care of is, is a great way to, well, make sure that you're going to thrive and become autonomous and, because we believe also that skills, academic skills are not enough today, especially for post-secondary students. So we want to make sure that everyone is both welcome and can thrive and become, as I said, well, reach their full potential. And I guess that this is what makes us a great school. So this is more practical information. Doors of the school will open at 7:30, and then it will close at 6:00 P.M. That doesn't mean that students will have lessons from 7:30 to 6:00, of course. There will be time for extracurricular activities. And for this, we have created partnerships with local infrastructures, such as, well, the Equotic Centre is right next to the school, for instance, but this is just to name that one. And we are a private school, even though we are a non-for-profit organization. So there are fees for enrollment, and enrollment is happening now. All the teachers are coming from France, so they need time to immigrate and find a place to live in. So we might close enrollment pretty soon. And yeah, I think that's it. Hopefully I remain short and efficient. So if you have questions, hopefully I've, I've got the answer. Thank you.
Thank you for being here this evening. It's a, it's a, it's an interesting and wonderful project for St. John, especially when we hear that there are only eight other schools across Canada, and there are 600 across the, across the globe. I love the standardization of it, you know? It's great for attraction of, of people to St. John, because if your child's in school, especially in one of those schools, it's an easy transition, which is always, always an issue for parents, is the school, in the school year and et cetera. So it would be, it's, it's really great to have. I'm interested in the concept of this child goes to school at two years old.
Well, it can give you lots of information. The objective at that age is mostly to make sure that students are going to enjoy spending time in school, because it's a long time, long part of your life, and to make sure that they are developing language, of course, and then knowing themselves and gaining autonomy, as I said. So it's mostly this, and then these are the foundations for what they are going to learn later on.
And oftentimes, when I walk in the morning, I have to go through Market Square because the pathway is closed there for a little bit. But I'll often see you at your little, at your table there. So if anyone's interested in picking up information, Marie's there every day, or most days that I walk by. Most days that I walk by, you're there, so you can gather up some information. I do have a question or a comment. Councillor Redwan, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you through you, Mayor, to Marie. Thank you for your presentation. Just wondering if you can speak a little bit more to what you're looking for in a host family? And if somebody's interested in that, how they can reach out to you?
Well, they can reach out to me, well, my email address, I think, is everywhere in town, as well as my phone number. There are, we are redesigning the website as well so that we include more information about this. Basically, what we believe in is that people willing to open their doors to a student are more than welcome to apply. What we, the only requirement, the actual requirement that we have is for the student to have his or her own room. Other than this, of course, our French students are looking to improve their English. So English-speaking families will mostly fill that need for the students, but we believe that it's also a great way for French people to know that Francophony exists everywhere and elsewhere in the world. So it is a true cultural experience. So people who are willing to offer this and make sure that they are helping students navigate in that new culture is more than welcome to play.
I'm assuming that you probably have to make sure you have the host family before arrival and everything in place? Yeah, okay, well, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Sullivan?
Thank you, your worship. Thanks for your presentation. Very exciting. I'm a teacher, he's a teacher, so you got a few on you. You did a wonderful job presenting.
Thank you.
So the question you mentioned about potentially soon closing registration because you're preparing for next September, are you at liberty to say how big the school is going to be when you start?
Yeah, so the capacity, well, the, the location that we have can welcome up to 450 students. We're not planning on having that many students for the first year. We, I think that we aimed high at first, close to 200, well, 280 students. We are very optimistic. We believe that the first year, there will be between 120 to 170 students with those students from France.
And will that be all grades, like two to eight, age two to 18?
Yeah. So for now, the enrollments are mostly at the beginning of middle school and also primary school, whereas our students from France mostly come for their first or second year of high school. So grade 10, 11, lots of grade nine as well and grade eight, but also primary school.
So what staff complement will that bring? How many teachers will you add?
Well, depending on the definite, number of students, there will be between 30 to 50 teachers coming with their families.
Thirty-three-zero to five-zero?
Yeah. Thirty to 50. Because, well, in kindergarten and primary school, there is, well, usually two teachers or one to two teachers per class. But for middle and high school, there is, well, usually these are teams of close to 10s teachers.
Exciting stuff, thank you.
Thank you.
That looks like it, Marie. I probably mentioned to you that I did have a daughter who spent a year in France, and she was teaching, and she was fortunate enough to live with a French family. And so that cultural experience is, I mean, it's, it's amazing, and, you know? And, and what it did for her French language to be immersed like that every day was wonderful. So it is a great experience on both sides. Maybe I could get one of those students, and in a year, I could learn French, maybe.
Yeah.
Never know. Anyways, thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening. Thank you.
Okay, can I get a receive for information? Councillor Ogden and councillor Stewart on the question? All in favor? All in favor, opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. You're welcome to stay, Marie, or you can take off whatever you'd like to do. Next item, City Clerk.
Thank you, your worship. Next on the agenda is item 10.1. It's a traffic bylaw amendment regarding Schedule B and G, and this is third reading.
Commissioner, Hugo Halt, I'm sending this over to you for the intro.
Yes, good evening, your worship, members of council. Before you this evening is third reading for a bylaw that would restrict parking on five streets to support efficient public work service delivery. First and second reading would have been granted at the last meeting of council.
Okay, City Clerk, I'll pass it off to you for the motion required tonight.
Thank you. So in this case, there's just the two motions, reading by summary and reading by title.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to approve reading by summary. Councillor Ogden and councillor Harris on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
And this is entitled, "A Bylaw Respecting the Traffic on Streets in the City of St. John", and amendments there too.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to approve the reading by title. Councillor Lowe and councillor Stewart on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
And my apology, your worship, I do have to read the summary of it, but it's very short. The summary for this one is, "The proposed traffic bylaw amendment will limit parking on a number of streets to one side only to improve access for solid waste collection, emergency and service vehicles, as well as snow removal efforts. It has become necessary to impose parking restrictions on certain streets to aid in snow removal operations during winter months. The proposed amendment will amend Schedule B, no parking any time, and Schedule G, alternate side parking." And then the title again of this bylaw is a bylaw respecting the traffic on streets in the City of St. John, and amendments there too.
Okay. Okay, next item, City Clerk.
Next is item 10.2 on your agenda, and this is for a snow removal bylaw, third reading.
Commissioner Huguenot, over to you for this as well, for the intro.
Good evening again, and this bylaw as well would have been before council first and second reading at the last meeting. This is third reading, and these amendments would update the snow removal bylaw to reflect recent changes to Local Governance Act. And this would essentially give us more tools in terms of managing the street right away, particularly with respect to removal of ice and snow.
Thank you. So this one is similar to the last one, and I'll need a motion to approve the reading by summary. Counsel, the deputy and Counselor Radwan on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
"A Bylaw Respecting Clearance and Removal of Snow and Ice in Public Streets in the City of St. John." And the summary is the proposed bylaw will repeal and replace bylaw number M26, a bylaw relating to clearance and removal of snow and ice from public streets in the city of St. John. The bylaw amendment clarifies requirements for citizens as it relates to removal of ice and snow and the public right away and includes provisions for administrative penalties.
Thank you. So I'll need a motion to approve reading by title. Counselor Hickey and the deputy on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
"A Bylaw Respecting Clearance and Removal of Snow and Ice from Public Streets in the City of St. John."
Next item, City Clerk.
And the final item under bylaws is 10.3, and this is a BIA bylaw amendment. And we're looking for first and second reading.
Over to you, John, for the intro.
Thank you. Yeah. So just to advise council as well, we have Nancy Tissington that's attending the meeting virtually on behalf of Uptown St. John. And so just as a, as a quick overview, so the proposed 2024 Business Improvement Area budget was submitted by Uptown St. John to the October 30th council meeting for council's consideration. The budget of approximately $528,000 would maintain the same levy rate as in previous years at 16 cents per $100 of assessed property value on non-residential property within the business improvement area. Per the Business Improvement Areas Act, council directed staff to advertise the required public notice in the newspaper stating council's intention to approve the budget, the extent of the BIA levy that was necessary for 2024, and the period during which written objections to the levy can be submitted. And the required advertising has since been completed on November 1st and November 8th. And we did not receive any letters of objection from any of the non-residential users. And therefore, council can now proceed with first approving the 2024 BIA budget, and then after that, we would request first and second reading for the BIA bylaw amendment.
Okay, so I will take a motion to approve the 2024 budget for the Business Improvement Area. Counselor Hickey and the deputy on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. And then I'll take a motion to approve first reading by title. Counselor Sullivan and Counselor Harris on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Your Worship. This is entitled, "A Bylaw to Amend, Bylaw Number BIA-2 Business Improvement Levy Bylaw."
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve second reading by title. Counselor, the deputy and Counselor Harris on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
"A Bylaw to Amend, Bylaw Number BIA-2 Business Improvement Levy Bylaw."
The next item, City Clerk.
Thank you, Your Worship. Next on the agenda is a submission from a council member. It's a proposed amendment to zoning bylaw municipal plan submitted by Counselor Harris, and this was submitted at the previous meeting. So at this meeting, it's appropriate to discuss and vote on the item.
Okay, Counselor Harris, over to you for the, for your motion. And then you get a second or we'll go to your background.
Yeah, sure, Your Worship. So the proposed motion reads as, this is resolved that common council align with emergent best practices around zoning and housing creation by amending our municipal plan and zoning plan to do the following. One, allow up to four units on single-family homes or duplex lots as of right. Two, allow up to six units along rapid transit routes. Three, petition the province to eliminate the requirements for public hearings where neighborhood plans or community plans have alignment with the proposed development. Four, eliminate parking minimums to allow for developers to decide what level of parking service is required in their neighborhood. Six, rationalize zoning in St. John to allow, to reduce zone types. And finally, to change all commercial zoning to high-density mixed-use by right.
Is there a second on that motion? Counselor Ogden? Okay, if you want to give us a bit of background, Counselor Harris?
Yeah, sure. So really, this, I mean, the background information, everybody's probably already read it, but we see a pretty major declining or stagnant result in our housing starts. Council has already passed a few motions. I've listed them here. May 2nd, where we had a request to take some of this away, in May 2nd of 2022, that is, to talk about how do we, and this was a, this was a unanimous decision of council to send this away to staff to have a, to have growth committee and staff look at what would be the potential benefits of doing certain things that are already listed in this current motion as well. And one of those was a look at reducing parking minimums in certain places, rights of first refusal, inclusionary zoning, TIF incremental financing. Some of this came back and we found out about it, some of it didn't. And then we also had a final motion. This is how it relates is why I'm giving you this background. This comes in a bit of a slew of housing policy ideas that we're putting on the table, I guess, and I'm putting on the table. And, and for me, what it comes down to is recognizing that almost every idea that I've put forward tonight is not an idea that is in isolation. We've seen British Columbia go much further. Many of these have been taken from the recent announcements provincial government of British Columbia have done, where seeing the Minister of Housing basically demand the municipalities accept these anyway if they want housing accelerator funding. We've seen that happen with every city that, in Atlantic Canada, that has been given accelerator funding. They've been given a mandate letter from the federal government, from Minister Sean Fraser's office, to change their municipal plan to allow for housing creation to occur at a more rapid rate, for red tape to be eliminated. And that's really all this is. Oftentimes, and you know, we already know that we're behind when it comes to review of Plan S J, which is our municipal plan. So we're late for that, and I just don't think we have the time to go and debate and do the proper in-depth work on this issue when we see such a groundswell of municipalities rapidly changing their zoning bylaws and their policies that drive directly at this housing crisis. So that's background. Happy to answer any questions on this. This obviously does align with our strategic goals as a city, not just in our 10-year strat plan, goals for population growth, but as well as our new construction starts growth, sorry, our council priority under growth. And I did have discussions with Commissioner Poffenroth, as well as PEC members, Matthew Delutes and Anne McShane, before bringing this to council.
Okay. I have, I've got a couple of questions or whatever coming up here. Counselor Sullivan, over to you first, and then Counselor Hickey.
Thanks, Your Worship. You may want to go to Counselor Hickey first. I don't want to cut off any debate. I just think there's a lot here, so I was going to move that we refer it to staff so that we can get all the information back. But I'm happy to hold off if Counselor Hickey wanted to say a few comments first.
Counselor Hickey, over to you.
Thanks, Your Worship. I guess a couple of questions for the council, and I think it was that last meeting that we had, that council had endorsed and committed to action on the top 10 housing accelerator priorities, which are captured in, in what the council has listed here. So I question the viability of a referral motion, mostly because I think these are commitments that this city's made. We've, we've committed to end exclusionary zoning. We've committed to prioritize, enhance, and enhance our development approval process, both for rental and affordable housing. We've committed to reducing or eliminating parking standards. We've committed to eliminating restrictions related to height setbacks, building floor areas, and a whole bunch of other, a whole bunch of other variety. And there's subsequent four extra items in there that, that I think capture what's presented in this motion. I would suggest we need to make sure we're all on the same page when it comes to our housing advocacy. I think as we recognize this as our single greatest priority of this council, addressing the housing crisis, I think we've committed to bold action in that, you know, these are not small items. The 10 we've endorsed and committed to action with support of the housing accelerator funding are important actions. And I would suggest that what it comes down to is capacity. You know, we've, you've listed extra motions in here, Counselor, but I would suggest that they add to a growing pile on our planning desk. What we need is capacity to deliver real outcomes for the community. And if we're, if we don't have the capacity at City Hall, we don't actually have the ability to action any of these. So I urge our advocacy and I urge our focus to remain committed on projects like our housing accelerator funding, on the provincial government to take real action on housing in this community and recognizing the crisis that we're in so that we can all be singing from the same, from the same songbook, if you will, so we can all be focused on the same outcomes to, to better deliver for our neighborhoods.
Okay, Counselor, so in a nutshell, are you supporting the motion or not? Okay. Counselor Harris, can I, should I, I'll go to Counselor Radwan, maybe, and get...
Just ask me a question, I'll just get a response.
Okay, all right. If you want to, go ahead and raise.
All right, so thank you for the question, Counselor. The major difference between what happened last week and what this is calling for is action, and it is a sweeping change to a municipal plan that isn't asking staff to go away and look at something or send a letter or to examine it. It's this council setting direction at the policy level to get what you're calling better outcomes, which is more houses built. And we have people in our community asking for these changes to occur, not to have letters sent off to the federal government, not to have more, again, I put in this motion, a fore-motion of mine, where there are still three outstanding requests that this council sent to staff in May of 2022 that have not come back for review. So to me, you're right, it is a capacity issue. It's a staffing problem. We are not able to keep up with the pressures that are on growth because we do not have the staffing complements to get it done. And there are all kinds of reasons for that. I don't have time to nuance it. We all are aware of the limitations of the city, tax reform requests, all of that that are hard. But at the same time, these are just, or these are policy changes that, once put in place, align us with municipalities right away. And so I think if we're wanting to be singing from the same song sheet, we've got to get our butts in gear and get to work and do these policy changes at the rate of business, which is not months and months of deliberation and research. It's action where we see clear, especially at the federal level, clear requests. And so to your point about what we sent off to staff, staff last week, that was a request for staff to go and look at those 10 suggestions. What I'm saying is, no, let's implement them. Because the motion from last week was not to implement. The motion from last week was to examine. This is an implementation motion. So it's getting at that action.
Can I, I see, I see that I have Counselor Hickey's light on now. I don't want to get into these, just this two. Counselor Radwan, I'm going to go to you next. All right, so let's go to you next, Counselor Radwan.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so after, after we got this motion last week, I did contact staff and, I mean, the, the first, the first bullet about allowing four units on single-family or duplex properties, something staff are already working on. The other ones, I had some concerns about them for the sixth unit on a rapid transing route. We actually, I guess, don't actually deem, like, I know Transit talks about rapid transit roads, but we don't actually consider that when it comes to planning. I had some concerns about the public hearing piece because I want transparency in the community, so I'm not sure how that looks. But, you know, around like the parking minimums and changing all the commercial zoning to high density, like, I have concerns about kind of like making this, overgeneralizing St. John. I think that some of these things can be done, but it does have to almost kind of be piecemealed. When I was speaking with Jennifer Kirchner, I hope she doesn't mind me saying, she had mentioned that there are some, there's some commercial zoning in industrial areas, and that's where this could be really problematic. So anyway, so I'm not really comfortable with this, and I'd just like to say that I was disappointed that there was comments about Counselor Hickey in this motion, and I, I'm hoping going forward, we're not going to see comments like that in Counselors' motions.
Okay, Counselor, so in a nutshell, are you supporting this or not supporting it? Okay, Counselor Sullivan, back to you.
I'll, I'll make that referral motion. I'll refer this to staff.
Okay, am I going to get a second on that? Counselor Ogden? All right, so I've got a referral motion on it. That's the end of debate because what we're, we'll do now is we'll send it off to staff and we'll ask them to come back with some information for us. I do think that there's a lot of things in there that need to be explored before we just go for them and what the impacts would be. So I'm happy to hear that it will go off for that. And the other thing is that we have, our budget for '24 will be $187 million. You can only buy so much staff with that. And so, you know, we're working at capacity. We have a huge work plan. We put in our, we put in all of our priorities as a team, and staff has put together a work plan that goes with that. So that's, that's the bottom line. So I'm going to call the question. All in favor of referring to staff? I'll call the question. All in favor, refer, on the referral? What have I got? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven? Okay. And on the nays, I have Counselor Radwan and Counselor Hickey, so that passes. Thank you. Oh, sorry, Counselor Harris, sorry. Okay, next item, City Clerk.
Thank you, Your Worship. Next on the agenda is item 12.1. It's a staff presentation on DES progress update.
So, Mayor, this is another one of my favorite presentations, the district energy. I love it.
Thank you very much for having me here. So I'm very happy to give you, provide the council here, update on two projects we're working on it here. One is our short-term district energy system, and the second term is our long-term district energy system. And both of these projects always we need to make sure that align with our 10-year strategic plan, as well as our commitment to climate change, especially on the corporate, to be carbon neutral by 2040, as well as on our community greenhouse gas to be carbon neutral by 2050, which we're going to bring it, hopefully, hopefully next year to bring the pathway See, I'm going to jump here, so it's going to be a quick, quick presentation. So first, we're going to talk about our current project, which is the short-term Phase One of the district energy. In this project, this, we're looking at the small-scale district energy system where the Market Square heating and cooling plant is going to be our central heating or energy center to help us provide in heat in terms of hot water to the various buildings, such as Hilton, such as the, such as the Canada Game Aquatic Center, and hopefully in the future for other building. The scope of work of this project will include the replacement or upgrade of our chiller system, which is located at the Market Square for our heating and cooling plant, and also upgrading the thermal energy storage. We have two thermal energy stores. One is a hot water and one is a cold water. And guess where they're located? Under the St. Patrick Street there, we have two storage tanks. Whoever designed this building, I'm going to give congratulations to this guy, mechanical engineer. He must be a smart engineer. He was thinking about, I was impressed with it, like 20, he was thinking 20, 30 years beyond this. So I was impressed with this design. The second part of the scope of work, we're looking at upgrading our control system, connecting to the Hilton. And lastly, our terminal connection to Canada Game Aquatic Center by 2022. to the Hilton, and lastly, our terminal connection to Canada Game Aquatic Center by transferring the energy heat from the market square to the Canada Game Aquatic Center. We're lucky to get some contribution from federal government under the low carbon economy, and the project need to be completed by March 31st, 2024. That's a challenge. So where we are with our phase one district energy system, first of all, we did upgrade our chiller, they're over, they were, they're being constructed, implemented in 1983, so almost 37, 38 years, we completed in 2021. And give you a picture, how did we end up installing the chiller, we have to cut a hole by St Patrick in order to bring the chiller there, then we had two chiller there. We did upgrade our heating and control system, connection to the Hilton being completed, and the last one, we're working on it, is our terminal connection to Aquatic Center, to be completed by March 31st, 2024. And basically what we're doing here is we are taking the waste energy, which is already, already rejected in there, we're going to reroute it, so to distribute it to our, to the Canada Game Aquatic Center through hot water system to preheat our pool area, our domestic hot water, and other, other energy load, so we're going to use a lot of pumps, we're going to use heat exchange, we're going to use a heat pump at the aquatic center, it's a little bit complex project. So in order for us to speed up the process here, especially when you look at the delivery of some equipment, so we preorder some of the mechanical equipment, such as a heat pump unit, pump, all this beautiful stuff, we preorder them, we're supposed to get them by second of week of February, hopefully, 2024. And then, in the meantime, we did start working on the civil work by construction, gurry ground loop, in order for us to transfer the heat, as you can see from this picture, this is through the St Patrick's, across the St Patrick, and you can see the pipe, we have two pipes going there into the aquatic center. The project was completed by October, we completed, good, excellent. Second, third phase of this project is the installation of the mechanical equipment, with the project already been selected, to select mechanic, the work is on progress, and the last one is a control system upgrade, we want to make sure that both system, aquatic center and the market square, talk to each other, in order for us to maximize our environmental and energy efficiency and economic efficiency. So this is work still going. Next one, just to give you the good result here, we have the environmental and financial benefits of district energy, phase one of the project, total cost $2.4 million, way below what we expected. Total grant we received through the various federal government, provincial government, RDC, NB powers, around $1.7 million, which is almost 75% of the total cost of this project. City capital share is 25%, which is 640, 646,000, which is coming from our capital budget. Total savings of the project is $186,006.1. For the chiller upgrade, we already seen the saving, 85,000, we already seen the saving here. Thermal connect, we expect around $101,000 saving. The total greenhouse around 502 tons, to, to explain, to quantify this in term of, like removing 110 car from the road, something like that, or equivalent to 81 residential houses, so these are big numbers, these are big numbers, simple payback is 3.46 year, and reduce our capital 1.7, and we reduce our infrastructure gap, I call it gap now, I don't want to call it deficit anymore, $1 million. So we hoping to be carbon neutral, I'm working on this, hopefully we can be carbon neutral for the Canada Games Aquatic Center within five years. Where are we now? So last one, I won't keep you too long here, so this is our last project, this is our overall district energy system, this is a long term, so we, our goal here is we have to look at where we are on the 2050, how can we, how can we reduce our dependency on fossil fuel natural gas? So whole idea about this project is we want to electrify, we want to work with Saint John Energy on energy, because we want to electrify our thermal energy to electricity, we know Saint John Energy is working on zero 2030, so this is good, so we want to try to electrify our electrical system, or thermal energy system. So the project is divided into three components, the first component is, we call it the master planning, and basically what we're trying to do here is, we want to do a citywide mapping, mostly uptown, maybe a little bit north end here, is to identify what area, what zone area is eligible for district energy, using hot water systems. And we need to determine what load we need to do, how much load we need to put there, and to give us some class D estimation, how much it's going to cost us to do this here, just to give us, we're looking in the future, we're looking 10 year in the future, too much, how much we're going to get there. So the second one, we're going to more, more in detail here, we're going to get, choose 40 to 50 building, commercial building, I don't want to name everybody here, so I don't want to get excited, a lot of people outside, 40 to 50 building, so we're going to go more into detail on each building to determine what is our load, what is their HVAC system, how much revenue we can get from this, energy consumption, cars, all this beautiful stuff here, so this is more detail, this is a lot of work here when you look at 40 to 50 building here. The third one, which is, Mr Fudge will be happy about this, is looking at the financial and the physicality study of the building, so we're going to look at all the energy sources we have, to compare it, do a structural analysis, do a utility structure, government structure, or revenue, more detailed financial analysis, and determine about the, what the financial, the technical, environmental viability of this project. So this is a lot of detailed information we get from funding from the government to do this one here, hopefully we can also apply for some funding under FCM. So this is a long-term project, and this also align, again, was our 10-year strategic plan, so we all aligning everything what you do here. Your worship, this is my end of the presentation, if somebody have any question, I'd be happy to answer, thank you.
Thank you Samir. My favorite slide is the one just before this, and I love the, I mean, it's the right thing to do, but it's wonderful that it's economically beneficial for us to do it, I mean, 502 tons of CO2 equivalents, and that with the Canada Games Aquatic Center being carbon neutral within five years, I mean, it's all amazing, and it all has to happen. And so like I said, it's great that we, we've gotten, out of 2.4 million, you've managed to get us 1.75 in grants, so it's, it's wonderful to make it, to see that. I don't know, does anyone have any, I don't see any questions or, and obviously no concerns, but any questions, but just want to say, great work, I love it when you come to the podium, you've always got interesting workforce, and you've always got, you've always got someone else's money behind it, which is my favorite part as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I'll take a motion to receive information, councillor Stewart and councillor Hickey on the question, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, city clerk.
Next is item 13.1, it's a report from the Growth Committee, increasing resources for bylaw enforcement of the Community Standard Program.
Over to you deputy for this.
Thank you your worship. Well, on behalf of the Growth Committee, I'm pleased to bring the next item before council. Community Standards is a program that investigates and enforces unsightly premises, complaints, and zoning bylaw infractions for improper use of property. Complaints for unsightly premises and zoning bylaw infractions have risen since 2022 by a significant amount, but the program continues to be operated by only one bylaw enforcement officer. The growing number of complaints can no longer be handled by one person, and the expansion to include a second officer would allow the program to respond to the increased number of calls. Many councillors also highlighted this need during our recent budget discussions. Adding resource will improve neighborhood aesthetics, ensure the property users comply with the zoning bylaw, and make a positive impact on the community pride. Would you like me to move the recommendation?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'd move the recommendation that Growth Committee recommends common council approve an expenditure of $180,000 from the Community Services Reserve for resources associated with up to 24-month expansion of the Community Standards Program as outlined in the report.
Thank you, can I get a seconder for that councillor Sullivan, on the question councillor Ogden? They're going to get your mic on here councillor, there you go.
Okay, thank you. I think this is fabulous, we're going to make St John more proud, we're going to clean it up more, we're going to make our neighborhoods more appealing, which will increase our population growth, we're going to make people feel good about themselves, and that's part of defeating poverty, and it's just great that we're going to hire more people, and we can, I guess, we've done everything we could in some ways to get those people who do not take care of their properties, we begged and offered even to paint their houses for free, but now we can enforce it, and drive our standards, and increase, and improve our community, and I, I just think this is fabulous, and this is really hopefully going to change some people's culture and habits, and, and I thank the staff for bringing this forward.
Thank you councillor, also in the kit is increasing resources for bylaw enforcement of the Community Standards Program, and this was the presentation, that was presented at Growth Committee on November 21st, for your reading pleasure later on tonight, for anyone watching. So I have a mover and I have a seconder, so I will call the question, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, city clerk.
Next item is 13.2, it's another report from Growth Committee, North End Neighborhood Plan Grant Application.
Over to you deputy for this one, please.
Thank you your worship. The development of the North End Neighborhood Plan is intended to commence in early 2024 with completion anticipated in mid-2025. In preparation for this, staff has identified a funding opportunity through the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Green Municipal Fund. The recommendation is to allocate $200,000 from the Growth Reserve, and to direct the CAO to submit a funding application to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities for the North End Neighborhood Plan. Resolution, the resolutions included in the staff report are necessary to facilitate the grant and application. Would you like me to read the resolution?
Please.
The common council direct the chief administrative officer to develop a sustainable North End, or not North End Neighborhood Plan, that will include sustainability goals, specific targets, actions, and implementation and monitoring strategy, and allocate $200,000 from the Growth Reserve toward the development of the North End Neighborhood Plan, and in-kind contributions in staff time toward the cost of this initiative, and direct the chief administrative officer to submit a funding application to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities for the North End Neighborhood Plan, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign any required documents and ciliary to the application.
Thank you, so you're ruling that councillor, and I'll get a seconder on that. Councillor Radwan on the question, I've got a couple of questions, councillor Harris, you're up first.
Thank you mayor, through you, to the guests of the Growth Committee. Do we now know for a fact we're not getting our accelerator funding, is that what I'm understanding?
Uh, over to you or Jen Kirk.
CAO, because this is within our accelerator fund application to drive the North End Neighborhood Plan, so I'm just wondering if that's what that means, that we're applying to a secondary fund for it?
Through you your worship, our Housing Accelerator Funding application is still alive, and, you know, we're still pursuing that, so this is really another opportunity that we didn't want to leave hanging, and so we're leveraging this to take full advantage of the opportunity, and if we're successful on both, we'll have needs to, to follow through with the Housing Accelerator Fund, but we don't want to leave any money on the table.
Thank you. Councillor Ogden?
Yeah, again, thank everybody that's involved, the members of the Growth Committee, staff and such, and, and just get it out to the public to, to really watch the North End grow and, and change, I believe it's changing now, but it's really, it's, it's great timing, and this is going to be really positive news for the North End, thank you.
Thank you councillor, I will also mention that in the kit as well, for anyone watching, is the North End Secondary Plan Update was presented to Growth Committee October 31st, '23, a great read as well. So the motion is on the floor, it's been seconded, and I'll call the question, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, next item, city clerk.
Next is item 13.3, a report from Finance Committee on 2023 Fall DeVenture Issue.
Over to you councillor Sullivan.
Thank you your worship. I'll move the recommendation that's in the kit, and with the seconder, I'll speak briefly to it.
Councillor Ogden?
So the recommendation, this time of year, we borrow money in order to pay for capital projects, so the fall deventure issue is pretty boilerplate until this year. My new favorite finance word is inter-fund-deventure. So your financial plan has gotten to the point where we are now able to borrow against our reserves that we have put away for the last few years? Long story short, instead of borrowing money from the public in a deventure through the province and paying them interest over the next 10 years, we are going to borrow money from ourselves and pay ourselves interest over the next 10 years, which will save us $1.7 million, so $170,000 per year. Thanks to the vision of our finance staff and former Chair Merrithew, who when the finance, long-term financial plan was completed, they said, you know, one of the policies is eventually we would be able to, when our funds are healthy enough, to borrow from ourselves, and we are now at that point. Anyway, so that's the exciting bit about borrowing money that's before us now, we're borrowing it from ourselves and saving $170,000 a year.
Excellent. There's about 20 pages in the kit, but thank you, that's been a little nutshell for us, if you want to do any more deep dive reading. So the motion is on the floor, and it's been seconded, so I will call the question, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, next item, city clerk.
Next is 13.4, another report from Finance Committee on the 2024 General Fund Operating Budget.
Over to you councillor Sullivan.
Thank you your worship. So your Finance Committee started work in June with your city staff putting together this year's budget, we went through our preliminary work, our receiving file of a draft budget, we came to council to ask for their thoughts, went back, approved a budget to send to council, and that's where we are, and it will be before you tonight for receive for information, to give you some time to absorb and ask questions, and to do the heavy lifting and present that, I'll hand things over to CFO Fudge.
CFO Fudge, over to you.
Good evening there councillor, I'm very pleased to be before you this evening with the first draft of 2024 General Operating Budget. It's been unanimously approved, or endorsed I should say, by your Finance Committee, and as customary, it's before you this evening as a received and filed recommendation, providing council a further two weeks to consider what's before you this, this evening. The planning for the budget started as early as June, you can see on the slide, that's our budget process this year, where we did have service areas come into the Finance Committee, they provided detailed presentations to the Finance Committee, followed by a public engagement process that we coined Shape Your Budget, which took place in the summer, where we offered the community a, a virtual platform, as well as a number of in-person engagement sessions. And then in early fall, the Chair of the Finance Committee actually sought the collective feedback of council in one of the accounts, open session council meetings, and that's also been considered with respect to what you're, what's before you this evening. So senior staff is here tonight to answer any questions council may have on this received and filed recommendation, we also have our city controller behind me, Mr Levine, who was intricately involved in this process, and it felt good to have a second former Commissioner of Finance here tonight, Andrew Beckett, who was your Commissioner of Finance for eight years, lots, lots of representation from accountants tonight. The Finance Committee will take the feedback this evening, and will return with a budget recommendation on December 11th. So the, the draft, 2024 General Operating Budget totals $187,800,682 in annual spending, which is approximately 5.93, yeah, 5.9% higher than the 2023 budget, that represents $10.5 million more in spending than we had in the 2023 budget. After years of stagnant growth and restructuring, tax-based growth has allowed the city to increase the budget by over $30 million since 2021. 80% of the budget revenue in this budget is funded by property taxes, and property tax revenue is up $8.5 million, or 5.96%, fueled by over 12% assessment increases in the residential assessment class, and based on a proposed residential tax rate of $1.58 per 100 of assessment, which is a 4 cent reduction in the tax rate from 2023. Finance Committee is also recommending the non-residential and heavy industrial property tax multipliers remain the same at 1.7 times residential rate. City's core funding and equalization grant has been reduced by 10% in this budget, so it's down $1.5 million a year over year, that is offset and mitigated a little bit by. That is offset and mitigated a little bit by an increase in a regional services grant of $463,000. And although it is difficult to see a reduction in the grant, it does symbolize that the city's fiscal health is continuing to strengthen, as well as it lowers the risk to the city of St. John, because having heavy dependency on a revenue stream that you have no control over, or that is volatile and out of our control, is not a good thing. So it's a good sign for the city that we're strengthening financially. Finally, own-source revenue in the budget comprises over 12% of the budget. That exceeds the target in the strategic plan to have own-source revenues exceed 10%. And own-source revenues is $17.5 million in the budget. So here's a quick snapshot of the overall budget, $187.8 million in revenue and expenses. I'll get into the major changes in the expenses in a few slides for now. I've already discussed most of the major revenue items in the previous slide, with the exception of a couple items on this slide, one being St. John Energy Benefits, which is budgeted for $1.2 million in this 2024 budget, and that's associated with estimated benefits from the Burchill Wind Farm project the city of St. John would benefit from, as well as a carryover surplus of $2.3 million, which is coming in from the 2022 actual results. Most of that, $2.3 million, will be used to fund the $3 million capital reserve for council's catalytic recreation facility in the budget this year. And here's a snapshot of the last 10 years of operating budgets for the city. And as I referenced, you can see the restructuring budget of 2021 of $157.3 million, and the $30 million rebound we've accomplished over the last three years to get us today to the $187.8 million proposed budget for 2024. So I'll take my time over the next few slides, because there is a lot of good news in this budget, and many service enhancements and initiatives funded based on council's priorities, various city master plans, service plans, the 10-year strategic plan, which is so important for the city with respect to a vision, and based on the feedback the Finance Committee did receive from common council in October. So first and foremost, Parks and Recreation, which is a top-five Shape Your Budget feedback item through that process, also feedback from council. So once again, based, I alluded to this earlier, based on the resolution of council, $3 million is being set aside for the funding of a future recreation facility for St. John, bringing the capital reserve balance to $6 million, one step closer to becoming a reality and advancing the long-term financial plan objective to Save First, and also respecting the city's debt management plan. There's also funding in the budget to complete a recreation user fee review to support the council in determining what the proper subsidy level should be for St. John, and what the proper user rate should be for this community. Under the Parks and Recreation category, also, the budget includes new casual positions and the reallocation of permanent local 18-staff from the curbside recycling program, which will be contracted to circular materials, and that will result in enhanced maintenance and beautification of city parks, including Rockwood Park, Harbor Passage, Reversing Falls, and various other city-owned parks. Second category, St. John Transit, which is also a top-five category in the Shape Your Budget feedback engagement. There's a significant increase to St. John Transit's budget in this draft budget to support the transit strategy, with more than a $1 million increase in the operating grant to St. John Transit, which represents over 18% increase from 2023, so it's significant. Last category in this slide is street cleanliness. We also heard from council the desire to increase the service level of street cleanliness, and the budget includes new casual position and reallocation of permit staff to increase curbside and sightline mowing, enhance street sweeping for the uptown area and for bike lanes, as well as increasing the mowing of unsightly areas in the dense neighborhoods and heavily-traveled arterials. We're also focusing on the business in this budget. So this budget adds capacity to allow the city to focus on the business and not just in the business, which alludes to funding to support improvement of strategy. So there is a new position in the budget to support the chief city engineer, Mr Baker behind me, to manage and move forward with the backlog of capital and maintenance projects that we have, as well as capacity to develop a 10-year capital plan for the city that we've been talking about for some time, that will help us focus our ask when it comes to other levels of government. Having that will be tremendously valuable. There's also three additional positions in the budget that will be added to, it's proposed to be added to human resources, one full-time and two casual positions, and the purpose of those positions is to advance the 10-year workforce and labor relations strategy, as well as to support the implementation of the safety audit recommendations contained in the city's internal audit report. And pursuant, I think we heard this earlier, pursuant to the Growth Committee recommendation, the budget includes funding of three positions to advance a community enhancement pilot project to focus on bylaw enforcement, focused on dangerous and vacant buildings, minimum property standards, and bylaw enforcement. Communications will also receive some support in this budget with the position of, I guess, the transfer of the position that was formerly known as the special advisor to the mayor that will be restructured to report to the Communications Department, which will create flexibility and efficiencies for the city while ensuring the mayor continues to receive the support she needs as well. And there's also $16,000 in funding, increase in funding to make improvements to the city's website under the leadership of Director Lisa Casey. Industrial Parks, a catalytic project for council, will see an increase in the 2024 budget of $388,000 to support startup, actioning, and governance recommendations, as well as adding a position to allow for a dedicated industrial parks management position and a dedicated contract management position that are separate, rather than one manager being responsible for both of those files. So with two separate positions, both fully dedicated to contract management, one dedicated to contract management and one fully dedicated industrial parks, industrial parks manager can advance tax-based growth, and the contract manager can drive and maximize value in city contracts. We also heard from council a desire to enhance community support. So the budget provides service enhancement and community support with three specific initiatives proposed in the budget. First, there's funding for a position to provide community coordination support, primarily support that's needed on East St. John. We heard that loud and clear, that position, that funding's been added to the budget. There's also $15,000 in the budget to fund a new council discretionary grant fund to support, and the purpose of that grant fund is to support smaller community initiatives, and we will have a policy to follow over the next few weeks with respect if this gets approved in the budget. And there's also a $50,000 contribution to the Sophia Recovery Center under community support, further campaign to acquire and renovate a new center. This budget continues to be fiscally responsible. The budget continues to action our 10-year financial plan, including the 4-cent tax rate reduction I've referred to earlier. We continue to reduce the debt for the city of St. John, and we have, I'm happy to say the city will have the lowest debt level in the last 14 years in 2024. And there's also half a million dollars in funding allocated in this budget to either increase capital spending, and that would be a to-be-determined item, or as a backstop to absorb inflation and price increases in the 2024 capital budget. So we'll monitor that, and we'll come back with the appropriate recommendation. Finally, traffic safety enhancement. The budget includes $75,000 in goods and services to fund projects and support the city's new traffic engineer, and so new projects, new safety initiatives. There's also a half a million dollars in the budget set aside to fund a future new roundabout in St. John in accordance with Move SJ, location to be determined, and that recommendation will be brought back to council to discuss site and recommendation. 2024 budget will also support a number of other work plan items to advance a number of other important initiatives around the slide. I won't discuss all of them, but a lot of work in process. Affordable housing, it was also a top-five category in Shape Your Budget. In fact, it was number one. Affordable housing advocacy was number one in Shape Your Budget. And staff continue to focus on affordable housing action plan. So for 2024, the city will continue actioning the work plan that was started in 2023, which includes continuing the support to delivery of 39 affordable units through the Rapid Housing Program, making it a priority to be successful with a $14 million application for the Housing Accelerator Fund, and, which is an important initiative to achieve all the deliverables that are on the slide. And with respect to budgeted funds, the 2024 Affordable Housing Budget includes funding of a dedicated service and a dedicated manager, as it has done in the past and last year. That's totaling $217,000 and change. There's also still approximately $270,000 remaining in a dedicated affordable housing reserve that was budgeted in 2022. That still remains to be leveraged. There's also, affordable housing is also eligible, actually, to recommend use for the community service reserve, which has approximately $585,000 left uncommitted, so we can certainly tap into that if the recommendation made sense. The city can also leverage prime land that it owns and that is available to facilitate housing through option agreements. That would be a strategic initiative that could be pursued 2024. We just talked about a $200,000 draw from reserve to create the North End Neighborhood Plan, which will obviously include an affordable housing lens, and there's $600,000 remaining in grants to pay out in the Affordable Housing Grant Program. Let's jump back into the budget. So with respect to assessment, I won't spend a lot of time on this. 78% of the city's assessment-based growth was driven by the residential tax class with an assessment increase of 12.69%. And over three years, the residential tax class has seen an assessment increase of 32%, over 32% in three years. While the non-residential class in 2024 had an assessment increase of 3.19%, which represents 19% of the city's assessment-based growth, and heavy industrial class increased by 0.44%, which represents 3% of the city's assessment-based growth. And I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, property tax revenue is up $8.5 million over prior, almost entirely, well, entirely from the residential tax class. You can see that in the first bar. The first bar is the residential class property tax revenue, $8,496,707. The residential property tax revenue would be up 9.91% year-over-year with a tax rate of $1.58. Second bar represents the non-residential tax class, property tax revenue increase of $270,186, which is a 0.64% increase. Assessment increase was 3.19%, but 0.64 with the drop in the tax rate. Third bar represents the heavy industrial tax class, which will have a $293,000 reduction in property tax revenue for the city, or a reduction in 2.04% year-over-year, again as a byproduct of the reduction in the tax rate. So the city's budget has been impacted by inflationary pressures ranging from 3% to 5%. I mentioned earlier, the 2024 budget is increasing by almost 6%. And as we discussed at the Finance Committee, this slide really demonstrates the need for increased flexibility in the property tax multiplier, with the current maximum of 1.7 being too rigid, because it does not provide, or doesn't allow for a fair allocation of inflationary costs to all tax classes with a limit of 1.7. So we certainly do need to see more flexibility with that multiplier. Proposed 2024 tax rate again is $1.58 per 100 of assessed value. Just, the slide's just benchmarking the residential rate and the non-residential rate in St. John to our benchmark peers, and we are making progress reducing that gap and becoming more competitive. And we spoke to this slide as well. It just shows the breakout of our core funding equalization in RRC grant between 2024 and 2023, which is down 6.83%, or almost $1.1 million. Next few slides will provide an overview of the year-over-year changes in the city's operating expenses in the draft budget. Wages and benefits account for 52% of the overall budget. The budget's fully compliant with the wage escalation policy, as the wage and benefit budget increase has not increased more than the lesser of the three-year rolling tax base growth, which was 7.88% or CPI plus one. We're using the 12-month New Brunswick CPI factor for September, which was 4%. So CPI plus one is 5%. So 5% is the maximum for the policy that the wage and benefit budget envelope can go up. Budget also includes all negotiated contracts between city and employee groups, and also recommends, includes a recommendation by the CAO for a management wage increase of 3.5%. And this is simply the calculation to demonstrate the budget is fully compliant with the wage escalation policy. The proposed 2024 budget, wage and benefit budget is up $4.6 million over 2023, which is 4.95% higher than 2023 under the 5% cap that I just referenced. Total operating expenses in 2024 are up $10.5 million year-over-year, and you can see on this slide very quickly where 90% of it's coming from. When you add up the increases on the slide, wages and benefits, increase in the road budget because of the price of asphalt, increases in fuel costs, increase in the St. John Transit investment I referenced earlier, increase in capital from operating to fund the 2024 capital program, and the funding of the roundabout in capital reserve, all those items represent about 90% of the increase in the budget. If you look at expenses on a service basis, or a service-based budget basis, I guess, if you want to look at the $10.5 million from that perspective, growth in community services is up 4.18% or $827,000, and this is due to wages and benefit increases, the increase of three staff for bylaw enforcement we talked about earlier, and the addition of the position to support the Eastside Community Services, as well as the $50,000 contribution to the Sophia Recovery Center. Public Works is also up $3.7 million, or 9%, close to 9%. Due to wages and benefit increases, an increase of $1 million in the road budget, a $1 million increase in the St. John Transit subsidy, increase in utility cuts of about half a million dollars, excuse me, an increase to the budget for the casuals to support street cleaning, park maintenance, and things that I mentioned earlier. Public services is up, sorry, public safety services is up 4%. Wage and benefit increases, as well as cost of a new record management system for the police. Utilities and infrastructure service is up 5.18% or $318,000 due to wages and benefits, but also the adding of the position I referenced earlier, the project manager to support the chief city engineer. Strategic Services is up 8.75% or $693,000. A lot of that's to do with the increase in the assessment charge to Services at Brunswick, because as assessment goes up, our charge is a byproduct of the assessment, so that increases that charge. It's also an increase in the IT budget for maintenance and security and wages and benefits, as well as increases associated with our insurance. Finally, Corporate Services is up $851,000 or 11.44%. That's where the three positions for HR is located, as well as the increase in the industrial park service for $387,000. Finally, other charges, up $1.6 million due to increases with special pension payments as wages go up. That's where special pension payments will go up, obviously. Increase in capital from operating that I mentioned earlier, as well as the roundabout is located in this category. So by following the long-term financial plan, we expect the city's debt to fall to approximately $81 million in 2024, which means over the last 10 years, the city will have retired almost $40 million in debt in the last decade. So if there are any other questions from the committee, again, we have senior staff in attendance, but first I'll read the recommendations recommended that common council receive and file this report, and I'd be happy to take any questions the council may have. Thank you.
Okay, any questions, team? Councillor Lowe, you're up first.
Yeah, there's a lot of good things are turned. It says the addition of three bylaw- Yeah, there's a lot of good things here. It says the addition of three bylaw enforcement officers. Are one of them related to the taxi industry?
No, this isn't directly related to the taxi industry. This is more along the vacant and dangerous buildings, community standards, and bylaw enforcement. I got those all, Amy. So it covers those topics. However, in saying that, Counselor, we do have funds that we set aside for additional enforcement of taxis through the, under the taxi bylaw. And Commissioner Huguenholz's team are looking for some resources to ensure that we provide more services there.
Thank you. Counselor Harris, over to you.
Thank you, your worship. So, listen, budgets are hard. There's no question about it. And we are seeing a lot of changes and a lot of pressures in our community. I'm not sure that this budget recognizes some of those major changes, and that's not trying to be overly rebuking anybody specifically in this, because what you just did, Kevin, was walk us through a phenomenal budget by any other stretch of the imagination. Growth in community services is increasing at one of the, on the lower end of the spectrum. We don't have any updates, you know, it's a 4.18%. It's the second lowest increase, right? I have major problems with that, because we have not been able to keep up with the workflow. So I guess my question is, is a four-cent tax reduction that works out to be about $120 on my property tax bill over the year, really worth it to the average person when we have a by-name list with 221 people on it, we've hemorrhaged 400 and some odd affordable units in St. John over the last year? We can't really keep up in our permitting department the way that we, like, I guess I need help understand. Like, I know that housing is not a catalytic project priority, and it's not laid out specifically. It's part of our belong council priority. But, I mean, we did have things that we were working on, like a municipal housing corporation, to try to drive a major change in the dynamic of housing in St. John, which we'd be the first to do that if we did do it. I don't see that listed here. And I don't see an increase to the amount of money that we're putting towards repairing buildings that are on that abandoned, dilapidated buildings list. So, again, I really want to support the budget, but I, those two, those few things that I mentioned just seem out of step with reality. I don't know how to look at this and say, all right, I see how that's going to solve this really protracted problem in our community around homelessness, around, you know, housing affordability, supply creation, and whatnot. So just help me out, I guess, is all I'm asking.
Yeah, I'll probably refer to Commissioner Pofenroth for questions with respect to the growth plans. I mean, we do have the service commissioners involved in submitting their budgets, and their budgets are submitted in accordance with the various plans we have. So I will ask Commissioner Pofenroth to respond to that. But I will say to your question about, you know, is, what's it worth to, you know, for a cent or two-cent reduction? We're talking about a 33% increase over three years. You know, it's significant. And, you know, if you look at the slide here, it's not part of my presentation, but I brought it just to get, it's a sensitivity analysis to show, you know, by reducing the tax rate to $2.58, that's that middle row, residents are still going to have a nine-point, the residential class will still have a 9.91% increase year-over-year. If we went to $1.59, that's the top row, it'd be 10.61%. You know, went to $1.60, it's 11.3. So, you know, what is the right number? I can say that, you know, our tax rate is actually further from up than it was 10 years ago, when it comes to the gap between our $1.58 and their rate that they've approved. You know, it's, we try to look at this holistically, to say we want to be competitive, also appreciating all the factors that you mentioned with respect to, we have a lot of action plans that we have to service, and those drive growth as well. But for us, you know, we are basing a budget on recommendations from our commissioners who are providing and submitting budgets that are actioning the plans that have been approved by council. But maybe over to Commissioner Pofenroth.
To the counselor, oh, there we go. Through your worship to the counselor. Just a few comments around the municipal housing entity. We do have a slide there addressing the Affordable Housing Project, and the municipal housing entity is included on one of the last bullets there, to investigate the governance model for that. And we've indicated that ideally we would budget that through the half-application if we were successful with the funding, or alternatively, that we could look at funding that through the Community Services Fund. So that's the intent around the municipal housing entity. And you asked also about the Dangerous Buildings Program, and certainly there's a lot of work to be done there. And that is part of the Community Enhancement Program that has already been approved, and we are in the process of recruiting for those positions right now. One additional position dedicated to the Dangerous Buildings Program, and really to enhance that program and to focus on the new initiatives around repairing buildings. So we are looking at enhancing that program. I hope that answers your questions.
Can I ask a follow-up question, your worship, just to Amy on that? Sorry, Commissioner Pofenroth. Okay, so I get you're saying we got to have a staff person who's going to quarterback the repairs. We, last I checked, we had about $380,000 worth of proposed repairs we were going to do to try to salvage assets on three projects. Are you suggesting that as we, and that was for this calendar year, as was the municipal housing entity supposed to be investigated for this calendar year? I know the half-application interrupted that. That's kind of my point here, is this is the lowest increase from the department, and we saw some pretty major things not get done this year because we just didn't have the resources to do it. I get your point, Commissioner Fudge, about the tax rate, right? I don't want to put the burden on residents either, but I think residents are looking for impact. You know, for me personally, as a taxpayer, you know, $140 is something for sure. But anyway, so back to this repair thing. Are we going to be going beyond three repair projects in '24? Are we just sticking with those three? Does that staff person get us to six, eight? What does that do?
Yes, through your worship, I don't have that target number right in front of me, Counselor, but certainly with that additional person, we will be, our target's going to be higher. I don't have that number right off, but I can certainly get that to you. So the three that we did this year was to test out the program with the existing resources. Certainly, we'll be able to do more with the additional resource.
Okay. That's all for now. Thanks.
Thank you. So this is a receive and file, but I got to say that it's probably a good night to be on the Finance Committee or be part of the Finance Department, because overall, you guys gave us a wish list here, or asked us for a wish list a few weeks back. And as I go through this, you've delivered on so much that I have to believe that, to Counselor Harris's point, residents are looking for impact. This budget is going to impact the majority of everybody in the city of St. John for the better. It's just, it's a fantastic job. Eastside Recreation Full-Time Employee, good job there. Again, this is just, this is fantastic. Great, great work. I don't know how you do it.
Great work, Paul.
Counselor Redd, one over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a couple of questions come up to me from residents after our finance meeting. So just wondering, the $119 million of debt, that's actual debt. It's not net debt. Is that right, CFO Fudge?
The 81 million of debt that we're targeting?
Yeah, that'll go down, too.
Yeah, that's actual debt. That's not net debt. That's debenture debt for the city.
I thought so. I just wanted to be sure. And speaking about the questions that Counselor Harris had, do we know how much is in that Community Services Fund?
Yeah, there's around $585,000 remaining in that fund.
$85,000?
$585,000. And again, there's also an additional $270,000 reserve that's actually dedicated to affordable housing that has not fully been used as well.
Okay, so that's still in the reserve. That's great. I mean, one thing that I did want to mention that's come up kind of since then, we've kind of looked at it, and something that I love to be able to see if we can move money, more money into Pro Kids, is something that's kind of come up since Finance, because there seems to be a lot of need there. But in general, when I looked at everything and compared it to the strat plan, everything that we pretty much had for the timeline for 2024 is pretty much on target. I think the only thing that looked to be delayed for me was the 15-year fire plan, but the fire review was delayed, not staff's fault or anything. But, so other than that, it looked like everything was pretty much on target. Some great things, you know, coming up there, like the performance management, labor relations is so important. You guys are working hard on performance management already. And of course, the community development officer was huge for me, and the traffic calming projects, I mean, the calls are crazy. So, and these bylaw enforcement officers getting approved tonight is great, too, because I'm getting a lot of calls. So, anyway, thank you very much for your work.
Thank you, Counselor. Deputy, over to you.
Thank you, your worship. Kevin, when I'm looking at this, I'm thinking back, you know, because you're doing like 2014 to today, and I'm thinking, man, I don't want to ever go back to those days. You know, we have to drop 10 million bucks, drop our hat, and it's not easy. And it's almost like, you know, you died and gone to heaven here, because if you've seen where we were and where we are today, it's like night and day. And, you know, being in a position today to be able to offer services that should be taken for granted, but we could never do it. Now we can do it, and we can do it well. And I think that that's something to be said, you know, for the Finance Committee and the previous councils, this council. I just, I look at it, and I think, there's nothing there that I, you know, everything that we ask for as a council's in there. So kudos to you and your team, and I know it's just receive and file, but good to get the feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy. Counselor Sullivan.
Thanks, your worship. Just pile on a few points, I guess. Realizing it's receive and file, you know, this really is, and thank you for the comments from the counselors, this really is a result of the expression, you know, you plan the work and then work the plan. And this is working many, many, many different plans that we have in the city of St. John. Our long-term financial plan, which is kind of the basis that we run the shop on, speaks to a 5% stretch goal for stretch targets. That was the target we set. And in this budget, it's 5.96% increased revenue year-over-year. So that allows us to meet goals that were set, plus tag on some of the things that we heard from the strategic plan, from council, when we asked for Move S.J., you know, from many, many, many different plans. So the important bit is, this is on target with our plans. And this is just a personal comment on the tax rate conversation. And it certainly is a conversation, and it speaks to our need for continued conversations with our provincial counterparts and our partners in the other municipalities about balance and appropriateness. Our 5.96% revenue is being driven by increasing the residents' tax burden. Even though we're reducing the tax rate, we, if this budget passes, will be increasing their average tax by 9.91%. And it may have just been a psychological cliff for me. I couldn't put the taxes up over 10%. And so, you know, I'll take a bit of the hit for pushing to have that four-cent drop, to make sure even though it's 9.91%, it's less than 10. And, but really, you know, and thank you for all the participation the council has given us. Budgeting doesn't happen in two months or two weeks. We started the process in June, but really, we started our budget process during our budget process last year, listening to what council wanted and how we designed the process, to items that maybe have gotten missed, to priorities that counselors wanted to talk about. So as we go through and we ask questions over the next two weeks when we have it back in front of us, hopefully to approve our budget, you know, I would leave that with council and the folks at home who would like to see the city move in certain directions. You know, we need the conversations talking, because we want to get the items into the plans, because ultimately, the plans is what feeds the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. It looks like that's it, CFO Fudge. Appreciate your presentation this evening. You pulled a lot of rabbits out of your hat for their loved ones tonight, and we certainly all appreciate it. But can you figure out how to get the non-residential and heavy industry tax rate untethered from the residential? That's the next rabbit we have to work on. Thank you. Thank you. I have a receive and file, and Counselor Stewart on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. So we're going to chew on that for one for the next two weeks, and it'll be back at council. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is item 13.4, and it's a finance, sorry, 13.5, the 2024 Utility Fund Operating Budget Reporting from Finance Committee.
Over to you, Counselor Sullivan.
Thanks, your worship. So we have the separate budget for the utility fund, and we do, we will have first and second reading ahead of us tonight. And I'm going to steal some of Director Mason's thunder when I say that part of what he's going to present is the sixth year in a row of zero increase in the potable water rate for our award-winning modernized clean, safe drinking water and modernized harbor cleanup wastewater systems that we have in St. John. It's funny, they may just be pipes underground, but we have a modern city, no issues, and award-winning water. So with that, over to Director Mason.
Good evening, your worship and members of common council. Tonight, I'll present the highlights of the 2024 Water Utility Fund Operating Budget. As mentioned earlier, there is no proposed rate increase for flat-rate customers or metered customers. The proposed 2024 flat rate remains at $1,428 per year for the six straight year. The utility is aggressively paying down the debt, and once again, there is no new debt since the last borrowing in 2017. The utility budget aligns with the wage escalation policy. The proposed utility fund operating budget expenditures is $52 million to provide drinking water, wastewater, industrial water services to customers. Overall revenues are projected to increase by $2.185 million over 2023. In 2024, the revenues, meter revenues will increase by $432,000 as additional potable water will be supplied to an industrial customer. Industrial raw water revenues will increase by $835,000 in 2024 to cover the increased costs and industrial expenditures. Included in revenues is a $750,000 transfer from reserves to cover the cost of the Land Cash Lagoon dredging that is associated with a capital project to upgrade the irrigation system. Overall increase in expenditures for potable water, wastewater, and industrial water is projected to be $2.185 million over 2023. The largest driver of expenditures is the increase in capital from operating for wastewater capital projects. And the largest capital project in question is the installation of a new UV system at the Millilgeal Wastewater Treatment Facility. The balance of the cost increases is largely due to inflationary pressures. There is no new debt proposed for 2024. Capital funding for operating budget will be $5.5 million. And by the end of 2024, the debt will be reduced by approximately $45 million over the seven-year period from 2017. The next few slides will discuss the industrial water rates and the industrial water system. Full separation of the industrial and potable water systems was achieved as part of the Safe Clean Drinking Water Project. Since 2020, all industrial raw water customers have been billed the full cost of delivering raw water by bylaw rates set by common council. Industrial raw water rates include the following components: the operational cost to provide the service, asset replacement costs, rate stabilization reserves, new debt associated with industrial... with industrial, with industrial system deliver, new debt associated with the industrial system, and previous debt. The industrial water rates are set by common council via bylaw for the four large industrial users on the east and the west industrial systems. The following industrial rates are proposed for 2024. On the east industrial raw water rate, specific to Irving Oil Limited, for 2024 is $0.2974 per cubic meter. The east industrial raw water rate, specific to Irving Paper, for 2024 is $0.0947 per cubic meter. The west industrial raw water rate, specific to Irving Polton Paper, for 2024 is $0.0835 per cubic meter, and the west industrial rate, raw water rate, specific to MB Power, for 2024 is $0.9526 per cubic meter. In conclusion, the utility has continued to aggressively reduce costs, finding efficiencies, and managing assets over the last six years. The cost-cutting measures, such as staff reduction through attrition, efficiency, and optimization has allowed for residential and commercial rates to be stabilized over the last six years. The water utility faces risk due to increased costs of goods and services. Continued cost-cutting measures in the future has the potential to impact the level of service. Revenue growth in residential and new commercial business is critical for the stability of the potable water rates. And the recommendation is common council approve the proposed 2024 Utility Fund Operating Budget and proceed with the first and second reading of the water and sewage bylaw amendments presented in the council report.
Thank you, Director Mason. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, I will hand it over to, it's back over to you, Counselor Sullivan, did you move?
Thanks, your worship. The motions are in the kit. There's kind of two separate parts, one is the budget themselves, so I'll move that common council resolve that the estimated revenue for water and sewage utility for 2024 will be $52,189,421, that's appendix A, and resolve that the estimate of expenses for the water and sewage utility for the year 2024 is also the amount of $52,189,421, also appendix A, that those be approved.
Okay, I'll take a second on that. Counselor Lowe, on the question, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
And without your worship, I pass it over to the city clerk to guide us through first and second reading.
City clerk, over to you for the three.
Well, we have the first motion, which was to approve the budget, so now we require motion to approve first reading by title.
First reading by title.
So moved.
Counselors, Counselor Sullivan and Counselor Stewart on the question, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend a bylaw respecting water and sewage.
Approved second reading by title, Counselor Sullivan and Counselor Ogden on the question, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend a bylaw respecting water and sewage.
Okay, city clerk, next item.
Next is an item that came from, or that was added as a supplemental item, and it's a request for proposal snow removal, St. John parking, and this was distributed before the meeting, it has a recommendation in it. It's recommended that the proposal submitted by Galbraith Construction for a standing offer agreement for removal of snow in St. John parking lots within the city of St. John for a period of three years, with the option of an extension for two years be accepted.
Thank you, Mr., you going to move that? Counselor Lowe? Thank you, and Counselor, and the deputy. On the question, we have, Mr. Dion is in the audience, if you have a question. On the question, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, city clerk.
And next is an addition that came from committee of the whole, it's item 17.1 with respect to update on property acquisitions for retail driver alignment, and the resolution would be that the city enter into an agreement of purchase and sale generally in the form as presented to committee of the whole at its meeting held on November 27, 2023, with Trivertis GP Inc. for the purchase of nine-square-meter portion of PID 307033, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the set agreement of purchase and sale and any other documents necessary to affect the transaction.
Okay, I'll take a mover, Counselor Lowe, and the secondor, Counselor Hickie on the question, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. And that, that's it for us, isn't it?
That's the final item, your worship.
Okay, before I call for Counselor Lowe's motion to adjourn, I just want to quickly say that staff have been busy, they've been, we've worked on the affordable housing action plan, we've worked on the Housing Accelerator Fund, the Rapid Housing Initiative, we've worked on, we've worked with developers with the province of New Brunswick, looking for some tax reform, we had, we were chasing one of actually Counselor Harris's motions to put a tax on vacant lots, we were looking for them to bring buildings more quickly to, for tax sale for us. We're a little bit behind with Plan SJ, that's part of the reason why, because we've dropped a lot of things to look after housing, because we need, as you heard tonight from all of our counselors, housing is a priority for us, so things are busy, and it was great news to hear that the water will not have a new, will keep its flat rate, the same rate for flat, for flat rate and for metered. There's been, if anyone who's bought anything in the last six years know that the, with inflation, a lot of things have gone up, so I want to say congratulations to the team because that's through efficiencies and through hard work that they've managed to do that, so I just want to say thanks to the team for that. So I'll call on Counselor Lowe for the motion to adjourn. Thank you, Counselor, and I'll take a second on that. No secondor? Counselor Hickie, thank you so much. Good night, everyone.